Good evening. Welcome to the February 22, 2016 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Baker lead us with the invocation. So if you would please rise for that and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, we give you thanks for this day and thanks for the blessings you've given each and every one of us, especially the city of Troy and its residents. We ask that you be with us this evening as we discuss important items and issues for our city and give us all the strength and humility to speak with them with an open and honest opinion and care and civility for each other and each of our fellow citizens. Please be mindful of those who are not as fortunate as all of us, who need you and may not be willing to ask for you or able to ask for your help. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Here.
All present? I'm still on the agenda from the liquor violation.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Our first order of business this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations. C1 is a recognition to Rick Greenwell, honored as the state champ in the AWWA Meter Madness Competition at the annual American Waterworks Association and the Michigan Water Environment Association Conference in Lansing on February 2, 2016. If I could, I'd like to meet Mike Schlegelmann at the microphone, who will describe what takes place there, and I'll meet you at the microphone.
No video today?
We're gonna do this in person.
Nice. I didn't even see it. I got her leg.
And you can describe what's gonna happen here?
Okay, very good. Good evening, everyone. This contest is put on by the American Waterworks Section to get some of the field staff involved in the section itself. And what it is, is assembling a water meter in the fastest time with the least amount of errors. Rick is the second-time state champion in 2014. He took second, went on to the Nationals, and placed fourth in the nation. Last year he took first, and this year in 2016, he once again took first place in the state of Michigan. So Rick is going to do a live demonstration for us tonight.
Well, Rick, let's know that... What's the time you're trying to beat?
Eighteen point six nine.
Is your best?
Yes, that's one of the state...
Eighteen point six nine. So you're gonna beat that tonight?
I'll try.
Do you need me to stand next to you and compete, or?
Let's go.
That's seconds, not minutes, right? I don't have to get...
What's so funny?
I've got the timer right here. I'll start Rick when he's ready. One, two, three, go. He's putting the chamber together now. The chamber is the device that actually mechanically measures the flow of the water through the meter. Putting the chamber in the body, the screen goes in, the O-ring seal for the back cap. Rick, you almost did it. Eighteen point nine four seconds.
If I'm not mistaken, don't they throw some pieces of equipment in there that have nothing to do with this to kinda confuse you two?
What I've done to see five different pieces.
That's right, Mayor. What they do is put a few pieces from next year's meter in the bucket, just so you have to really know what you're doing when you put it together. Each year, a meter company sponsors the event. This year, it happens to be a Mueller meter. All right.
Champ is ready.
The champ is ready. One, two, three, go. Once again, putting the measuring chamber together. Into the main body, it's got the screen in, the O-ring's going on, cap spinning on. Nineteen point eight four. Nineteen seconds, eighty-four one hundred. Congratulations, Rick. Bring that trophy over here. Let's put this right here. Rick, if you could stand over here. It's my pleasure to represent the Troy City Council here and present you with a certificate of recognition for Meter Madness State Championship 2016. And I'd like to read this into the record for you. Whereas the city of Troy Public Works Department employee Rick Greenwell had a record-breaking time for the 2016 State Championship Meter Madness Competition at the American Waterworks Association State Conference in Lansing on February 2, 2016, with a winning time of eighteen point six nine seconds. And whereas, we applaud Rick Greenwell for assembling a water meter in a record time for the second year in a row to win the 2016 State Championship. Rick is now setting his sights on the National Meter Madness Competition at the American Waterworks Association's Annual Conference during the third week of June in Chicago. So now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Troy commends Rick Greenwell for his fine efforts and extends this token of admiration with which you are regarded in this city. And be it further resolved that the City Council of the city of Troy joins the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of Rick Greenwell winning the state 2016 Championship for the Meter Madness Competition and wish him success in June at the national competition. Presented this eighth day... Well, this is actually the 22nd day of February 2016 because you were... You couldn't be here on the 8th. But it's signed by myself, all members of the City Council. Congratulations, Rick, and thank you for representing the city so well. Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda is C2, 2016 Breaking Bad Retreat Invitation with an introduction by City Manager Brian Kishnik. Brian?
This is our presentation, Mayor. As you know, this is the Breaking Bad Week. Starts... Well, it started a long time ago, actually, as we were talking last week. The team that Maggie Hughes has led to put together this Breaking Bad Retreat started sometime back, February or March, June maybe, to put this together. So it's a great undertaking with a great staff, a lot of people involved. I know we have about ninety people who are set to come. This is our third year of doing a retreat, and we're really happy to put this video together that hopefully you'll see.
You know the business, and I know the chemistry. Maybe you and I could partner up. Chemistry is the study of change. It is growth, then decay, then transformation. So straight like Hughes, all of a sudden, age, what, sixty? He's just gonna break back?
So with that retreat, I want you... If we watched that again, and I won't do that to you, but it is a great video they put together. As I'm walking up the stairs, I actually turned left, which is the wrong way to go to my office, and we'll have a nice discussion about that, City Hall wayfinding and how difficult it is for people to get around. That's just a little subtle thing Maggie put in there to see if people were paying attention. These are the elements that we'll be talking about on Friday and Saturday, and they clearly help us understand what Breaking Bad is. First, determine what our identity is, who we are, who we think we should be, what the process is that we typically do, and how do we make sure that, you know, we're not doing the same old things in the environment that we operate in. And then what are our expectations? Remember, the retreat always concludes with strategies, and I'm sure everyone on council and in staff has received the survey to submit that you will put two things in each element, and then we'll go over those on Saturday as well towards the end. So that's how we always conclude, and then that's what guides us in the budget process and the rest of the year, is sort of a map for where we're going. So please, if you haven't filled out those surveys, and we do know who has and who hasn't, so I won't ask you to raise your hand, and we won't say anything. They just need to be done by this week. So we're fortunate to be at the Kresge Center on Friday, which is a real treat. I don't know how many people have been through the building or been through it now that it's been added onto. And then on Saturday, we're at one of our favorite places, Walls College, which, as you also know, has done many renovations and additions. So we've got a great two days planned. We look forward to seeing everyone there. It's really just short, from about 5:00 to 8:30 on Friday, and then I think on Saturday, we're going from 8:00 AM till, I think we conclude at about 9:00 PM. Oh, 2:00 PM. But we'll try to stay on schedule the best we can.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Thank you. That concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations. There are no carryover items this evening, and we concluded the public hearings before this meeting, so there are no carryover public hearings. So we will move to public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And I will call upon Jim Warpatinsky, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on N1. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff. Please pass the ordinance, the tree ordinance. It's, as you know, it's been a long time that the city residents have wanted this ordinance. There's been several stop-starts. I was optimistic it could get passed a couple of weeks ago. I couldn't be here for the hearing before, but I really... My first choice would have been that you had a study session, because some of us have been around for a long time, like you, Mayor, and Councilman Hoderick. But Councilman Pennington and Baker don't have the institutional memory on this tree ordinance and stuff. So I thought that was not a good thing, that we could not allow them a study session before they had to vote on this. But be that as it may, all things end well, it'll be all right. But this ordinance, I thought, is fairly decent. Planning people did a real good job on it, I think. My personal opinion would be I would like to have it be a tougher ordinance, a little more teeth to it. Because I think, once you get into a city, when you say you're gonna be in a city, whether you're a resident or a developer, you give up some of your property rights, I think. If you're out there in Timbuktu, you can be a free spirit, but when you put yourself in a city and you have the common good idea, I think you give up a little of your property rights. So I think we could be a little stricter, but I'll take what I can get, and I hope you do this one. And the clustering thing, I think, is a great idea. So please vote positive on that as well. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim. Next, I'll call upon Phil Sanzika, Troy resident on N1. Good evening, Phil.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk tonight. I've been on the Planning Commission now for about eight years, and it's been... Really enjoyed working with the staff and all the people and the consultants. But what's been frustrating, I think, to me, has been the lack of the tools to really manage our ordinance, manage the development of property, and really to manage our natural resources, you know, the water resource facilities that we have in the city of Troy. And one of the major resources that I think that we've always been concerned about are trees, and obviously the restoration and management of the trees that we have on our sites, especially, you know, the buffering from the adjacent properties, the screening that's provided between the different uses. I think the ordinance is very reasonable. I've worked for developers before. I know how difficult it is to save trees. And the ordinance does respond to that. You know, they don't... They understand that they can't preserve all trees on the site because of the billing envelope, all the utilities that go in, the rear yard drains, the services, and really, whatever trees that we can preserve along the buffers are really what we're concerned about. So I'd like to, you know, I think... Thank the City Council for their time and effort in reviewing this. I think it's a good ordinance. I think it's very reasonably done. It does account for trees that are dying and dead, and those aren't trees. But basically, what we wanna do is try to preserve or replace the specimen trees there on the site. And again, for to preserve our natural resources. And I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk, and I hope you do pass the ordinance.
Thank you, Phil. Next, I'll call upon Jean Stein. Mayor Stein, I don't see her. So I'll pass on that right now, and that concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And I'll ask if there are any response from the City Council or City Administration to public comment. Thank you for those that came. I noticed, along with Phil Sanzika from the Planning Commission, we also have four other members of the Planning Commission here this evening. There are no postponed items this evening, so we will move to regular business. There are no mayoral, board, and committee appointments. So I'll turn the microphone over to Mayor Pro Tem Pennington for City Council appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. I have actually no appointments at this time.
Could we do Phil, seeing he's here?
Oh, yeah.
And I think it's on the agenda. Sorry to catch you there, but...
That's all right.
We did nominate Phil Sanzika as the Planning Commission Rep on the ZBA for the term that expires 12/31/2016.
Zoning Board of Appeals. So appoint, yeah, Phil Sanzika, the term expiring 12/31/16.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we appoint Philip Sanzika as the Planning Commission Rep on the ZBA for the term that expires 12/31/2016. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Phil, and thank you for doing that for us. Thank you. I, too, board and committee nominations, there are no mayoral nominations this evening. Are there any City Council nominations this evening? There is no request for a closed session this evening, so we will move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to pull this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as written.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the agenda packet. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes. Motion passes. If you are here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next, our memorandums and future council agenda items. K1A is an announcement for a public hearing on March 14, 2016, which is a zoning ordinance text amendment, file number ZOTA 247, the oil and gas extraction. I would ask everyone to make sure that they read that before next council meeting. Very important document. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. So we will move to council referrals. N1 in council referrals is a motion for reconsideration for a revised Woodlands Protection Ordinance as requested by myself and Councilmember Campbell. I will defer to Councilmember Campbell at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. As everybody knows, during our last meeting, we did discuss the Woodlands Protection Ordinance at length, and at that time, I certainly took exception to some of the content of the ordinance that was written. I didn't feel it was strong enough, and it allowed builders the opportunity to just pay into a little city fund, rather than really replace the trees as was specified in the ordinance. And the tree fund really would only allow the city to plant new trees on public property, which really doesn't help the people that are the new property owners. So after reviewing it, I requested that the city look at revising that and just removing the verbiage in Section F, which is the tree replacement alternatives, Item 2-C and Item 3, so that now the ordinance would read that the trees have to be replaced, and there's no writing a check and moving down the street. So I... Hopefully, it's gonna hold the builders a little bit more responsible for putting the trees back where they should be, so.
Thank you. Did you wanna move the resolution?
Yes, I'd like to move the resolution for reconsideration as written.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Campbell, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve N1A, which is a motion to reconsider. And I would like to read that. Be it resolved that upon the request of Mayor Slater and Councilmember Campbell and the Planning Commission, and as allowed by City Council Rules of Procedure Number 11, the Troy City Council agrees to consider its vote on Resolution Number 2016-02-013 based on a revised proposal. The resolution for reconsideration is as follows. Resolution Number 2016-02-013, moved by Slater and seconded by Abraham. Resolved that Articles 8 and 13 of Chapter 39 of the Code of the City of Troy, which includes miscellaneous provisions related to woodland protection, be amended to read as written in the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment ZOTA 248, City Council Public Hearing Draft, as recommended by Planning Commission. And of course, that was a yes from Abraham, Hoderick, Slater, and a no from Baker, Campbell, Henderson, and Pennington. Further discussion on the motion. I do have a couple of comments. I do see that Mayor Stein has arrived, and we've already passed on public comment at this time. I'd like to make a couple of comments. After the City Council meeting two weeks ago, it was my hope that there would be some agreement for everyone. So that's why I voted for the ordinance as it was written, because I thought it was an agreement that could be... That each side could live with. Although it wasn't exactly what I wanted, I was willing to vote yes for it. So when it got defeated, I listened to the council meeting, or the Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday following the City Council meeting. And I listened to specifically what the developer had to say at that meeting. And the developer said something that was very interesting to me. He said that I base the price of land on what the ordinance says. So when I heard that, that tells me that the developer bases what he's gonna offer for a piece of property based on infrastructure, improvements to the land, no matter what it is. And that would include whether he's gonna clearcut the property or he's gonna attempt to save trees. So he's gonna factor all of those items based on the ordinance into what he wants to pay for that land. So he's not gonna really be out... He's gonna factor in that money, and if it costs a little bit more money to preserve some trees, he's gonna factor that into what he pays for the land. And ultimately, the person that's gonna really pay is the person that buys the house. You know, that... The consumer, as always, is the one that ultimately has to pay. So I heard that, and I got up Wednesday morning, and I thought, after what Councilman Campbell had said, that he didn't think there was enough teeth in the ordinance, I said, "I agree with him." So I called Councilman Campbell up, and I said, "Are you willing to meet..." Because I'd like to discuss with you what you think would satisfy you as having more meat in the ordinance. So we had a discussion, and we thought the best thing to do was to remove and omit that one section that called for being able to clearcut and then just pay into a fund. And I think we both agreed that that was... And I think we both agreed that that would defeat what we were trying to accomplish by still allowing clearcut. So, we decided that if we omitted that section, what we're really trying to accomplish is to replace trees. That's our goal. So, if that's our goal, then we don't need the third section. So, that's what brought us here tonight for reconsideration, is very simply, what we're trying to accomplish is to stop clearcutting and replace trees that are removed. Any other comment on A? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Mayor, extra weed man, I actually, I watched the Planning Commission's meeting also, and I want to commend them for their work on this, in this issue. They talked with that builder about many issues, the houses not being conforming to each other, along with the trees. And the trees were a contentious point between the builder and the commission, and it was somewhat of a sticking point, and I commend them for their work on that. What they did come up with, and they voted eight to nothing, was that the city council should have either a planning session with them, or a planning session on their own, and I agree with that wholeheartedly. And I would support, obviously, support some type of woodland protection ordinance that gets us out of this clearcutting option, because that is, that's what people are so sick of seeing. But I would, again, I would like to see that with a study session attached to it, because we, like it was said earlier, we don't have, we haven't been around enough, and we haven't met with these Planning Commission members that have years or possibly decades of experience on this topic. And like I said, they voted eight-nothing for us to meet on a study session, and I think that that should be done.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Henderson, or Councilman Henderson, used to be Mayor Pro Tem.
I also was disappointed in the last meeting, in that we didn't get to move forward on a study session. And the study session, you know, we're elected here to make good decisions. Good decisions, you know, are brought to us in a lot of different forms. And one of the things that I think that this council, all seven of us, bring to the table is a unique set of circumstances from our past. And I think in a study session, not only do we need to study what the Planning Commission has provided us, we need to also be able to communicate and maybe make a better mousetrap with every decision that comes our way. And in addition to Councilman Campbell's assertion that there were no teeth in the ordinance, you know, I brought up five different topics, and in each of those topics, there were no less than three in each concerns that I had that I would have liked to have considered during a study session. And that was voted down, and then we end up with a no vote on the ordinance overall. So, I'm with Councilman Pennington. You know, I'm ready to vote, no matter which way this thing turns tonight, but I certainly think that the input from all seven of us to try to, again, build a better mousetrap is an essential part of what the people elect us to do.
Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. Again, I'm really happy to see the members of the Planning Commission that are here this evening. I wish that we were here together in a study session to go over this ordinance. You know, I voted no last meeting, and I did want to have a study session with Councilman Henderson and Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, and I still would like to see that. I said last time that the trees in this city are a huge valuable resource to us, and it sickens me, as it does all of us, to see them clearcut. But as Councilman Henderson has said, you know, we are elected to be the voice of the people and to work with everybody together to come up with solutions that work, and without having any input of our own in conjunction with the Planning Commission, who has admittedly spent far more time with this issue than I have, because you just have. And I think that the opportunity to have a study session, just to have us sit in the room together and talk about these issues and concerns that we may have, to maybe at least all get on the same page, maybe not on all of it, but on some of it, would make some of us feel a lot better about the vote that we're having.
Further discussion? I think I'd just like to go on record that the Planning Commission did not vote eight to nothing to have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. I believe the Planning Commission said that this horse has been ridden down the road long enough that, and I don't want to speak for the Planning Commission, but after having talked to several of them, they recommended to have a study session to keep it alive. They didn't, they thought if we would have a study session, they could keep it alive, but I believe the Planning Commission is very happy with the way the ordinance is written right now. And they did not vote to have a joint meeting. They voted to recommend that we have a study session, is my recollection. And I understand personally that study sessions, there's a time and a place for them, and I understand that we have new council members, but I am just under the opinion that we've talked about this long enough, there's enough documentation, there's enough data, there's enough everything, that if a council member has a concern, he can, he or she can speak about it tonight. We don't need to have a separate meeting for a couple of hours to discuss what we've been discussing for a long time. So, that's just my opinion. Any further comment before we vote? Councilwoman Hoderick?
I hear my fellow council members, but there's a process that we have in the city for decision-making, and one of the most important bodies that gets appointed and does really hard work is our Planning Commission. And I also watched that meeting, as I do all of them, which makes me probably crazy, but they deal with very difficult topics, and they bring an expertise. Each of them have the appropriate backgrounds to serve on that commission, and that's where I do my studying. I hate to come across like I'm unwilling to study this with the Planning Commission. I guess what I'm advocating for and standing for is that I don't want to develop a habit that when a topic becomes something where we have discourse, that we redo the work of a commission that's been appointed to do that work, and a commission that has done it not capriciously, not thoughtlessly, not without consultation or thoughtfulness, a commission that deals with developers, they see and hear from the public on this constantly. So, my study session is staying dialed into that, and we had a heads-up, this was coming to us the last meeting. I studied it further, I had been following. Every single one of those members is reachable by email or phone, our planning department is reachable, and we come to this table then, having done our homework, had our understanding, and we may have differences of opinion of where we stand on this ordinance. Various members of us, I hear from tree people all the time. I know some of us may not. And we come to make that decision. So, part of my, what I want to caution against is words I heard from planning commissioners in that meeting, which were, why do we even exist? We're the recommending body, and if we have to revisit this, this has been studied, and if we pass this tonight, there's a period of time when council members can meet. When we have a study session, it's work, it's work for staff, it adds time, it adds, I just, we have to study some on our own, actually, a lot on our own. So, when we come to this table, we're working well together. I hate to sound difficult, but that's part of the requirement of this, and we have to respect the appointed bodies and the people we've appointed to think this through, and then look at that material, each of us with our own perspectives, and be prepared to vote on it. That's where I was coming from.
This is a motion to reconsider. If this gets approved, then there'll be a further discussion on a motion to approve an amended proposal, so is there any further discussion on whether to reconsider or not? Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, I'd like to just retort to that last, the same question can be asked of city council, why do we exist? If we appoint a Planning Commission that brings us a measure that fails four to three, and one member of council can change their mind over it and have actually changes to that ordinance made in a week's time, and then bring it back for us to reconsider. When other council members had concerns that could have been answered, had we gone to a study session, I just don't see that the, again, it's taken the teeth out of a city council. Again, why do we exist? I understand the Planning Commission's concerns there, but we're not here just to say, yes, boy, that's a great plan. Obviously, it wasn't a great plan, or it would have passed, and we wouldn't have had revisions after the fact and now presented back to us.
I think that is the checks and balances that we do have personally. Councilman Campbell?
In response to my esteemed colleague, everybody that's on this council had an opportunity the last week to express their opinion, to put anything else in that bill. So, everybody had the same issue, the same opportunity. You didn't do it, so be it. You know, these people have worked long and hard to get where we're at, and our job, we should do our job. They've done their job. I think it's up to us now to do our job. It's either voted down, or voted up and get it through. I think we wasted far too much time on this issue. You know, maybe people's feelings are hurt because I didn't do something. You know, sorry about that, but again, you had every opportunity to move ahead and do the same thing.
Any further discussion on the reconsideration? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
No.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is N1B, a motion for approval of amended proposed Woodlands Protection Ordinance provisions. Councilman Campbell?
Well, this should be fun, too. Again, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the revised protection ordinance as it's written and submit it into the minutes.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Campbell, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve N1B, motion for approval of amended proposed Woodlands Protection Ordinance provisions as printed in the document. I think we've already talked about that document as it is written, with the omission of the fund. Discussion. Councilman Henderson?
Mayor, I would like to add three provisions to the ordinance. And one of the concerns that I had is the unknown that presents itself with the builder as they buy a piece of property. And we've talked about a cap, and I'd like to add a provision for a cap that builders can be aware of the upfront potential costs when considering purchasing a plot of land in Troy. And I'm not sure what that cap should be, because we've talked about it, and nobody can give me a definitive answer, but I'll start at $10,000. That's item one. I'd like to also add to this ordinance that each homeowner that moves into a new subdivision that's built by a developer is responsible for planting three trees after closing, if the developer didn't leave at least three trees in that parcel. I'd also like to add that a Troy arborist is responsible for tagging and qualifying every tree over six inches. That's it for now.
Over six inches?
Over six inches.
Is there any support for that amendment?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, that we approve the ordinance as printed with the addition of a cap of $10,000, I assume, for the builder? Is that correct?
Well, tree replacement.
Tree replacement. And that the homeowner that purchases a home, starting when? Immediately?
Yeah, well, I'm sure there should be a buffer, right?
To plant three trees?
If they move in January, you know, they need till spring to plant.
And that a Troy arborist tag every tree in the whole city over six inches?
On the parcels that we're dealing with. So, as a developer moves into a development that they're going to make a subdivision, a Troy arborist needs to make the determination about the trees that are required to stay.
City Clerk Dixon, did you get that?
I did, yes. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on that?
Yes.
Councilman Campbell?
So, just out of pure curiosity, is this to help the homeowner and the community, or is this to help the builder? Because it sounds like what we're trying to do is make sure we don't hurt the builder's feelings and have to take too many trees down. I mean, again, I don't think we're working with the builder. I think we're working for the citizens of Troy who want some type of tree ordinance, not how many six inches, or what the limit is. I mean, I don't see where that helps anybody in the city of Troy, other than the builders or the developers.
No response?
Councilman Henderson?
It helps all parties. The developer in this situation has zero voice at the table, which is one of the reasons why I think it's important that we do a study session, so the developers actually have a stake in the matter, rather than just to jam this down their throats, say, boom, here you go, guys, you can't take down any trees, and it's going to cost you. So, the builders definitely need representation, in my opinion.
Councilman Campbell?
I don't think the, we say he has to take down trees, or I know, just give him a very logical way of replacing trees. We're not telling him he has to do anything. What we're telling him is he can't write a check at the end of the day, drop it off at City Hall, and cut everything down. That's all we're saying, which then supports the people again, which, again, is who we work for, not the builders.
Further discussion on the amendment? The vote, Ms. Dixon, on the amendment?
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
No.
Councilmember Abraham?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion fails. Any further discussion on the original N1B? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
No.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. N1C is a motion referring cluster option review to the Planning Commission. I would like to move that resolution now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council refers the zoning ordinance provisions concerning cluster developments to the Planning Commission, and requests that a proposed enhanced cluster option zoning text amendment be presented to the Troy City Council at the earliest possible date. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve N1C as printed and read into the record. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck tomorrow night to the Planning Commission. Good luck tomorrow night to the Planning Commission. I think in the long run, this will be good. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is council comments. Any further comments from council this evening? Councilwoman Hoderick?
Yes, I'm losing my voice. Wednesday will mark the one year passing of someone who was very important in the city of Troy, Anthony Pallata. And I find it hard to believe that it's already been a year. It seems like we just lost him. And if everyone doesn't mind, I'd like to take a moment and reflect upon him. Newspapers, at the time of his passing, mentioned about how he was affectionately known around town as the Godfather of Troy, partly because of his Italian heritage and in part for his tough stance on issues. I like to add to it, he was just a sincere caregiver of this city. He cared deeply about the community, like a godfather would for its godchild. He served in World War II in the U.S. Coast Guard, in the U.S. Navy, and volunteered on the Troy Veterans Committee. His absence was felt at veterans' events during the past year. It's not the same without him there. He began his public service, serving on committees. He was on the Liquor Advisory Committee in 1968. He was on the Board of Zoning Appeals. He was president of the Council of the Troy Homeowners Association and the Glenmore Civic Association, and was a founding member of St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton Catholic Church, where I knew him very well. He and his wife attended every week. He was first appointed to the council to fill an empty seat in 1972, and then was elected to serve 10 three-year terms, which ended in 2003. Councilmembers and the mayor are now term limited, so he was and will always remain the longest-serving council member. Former Troy Mayor Louise Schilling commented, no one will beat that record, and he was very proud of that. She also mentioned that he had taken great pride in being part of the four-three vote to allow Beaumont Hospital to expand in Troy. He was a 2,000-hour volunteer in the emergency center at Beaumont Hospital, and I remember I was there for outpatient procedure, and the person who showed up to help me get back out to the door where my husband was picking me up was none other than the Godfather. He held strong opinions, but people liked that about him. He was very pleased about the community center and felt it was a great service to the community, former Mayor Schilling had said in that article. He was a delightful man. Troy Mayor Gene Stein, former Troy mayor, was also quoted in the article, and I think it's terrific and says a lot about Tony, that there were two mayors that felt they wanted to reflect on him. Tony would be tough, she said, he said it like it was. Stein said Pallata had met his wife Marilyn, who preceded him in death by ringing the wrong doorbell. He and Marilyn were married for 62 years and raised three children. Stein described him as a loving father and a strict father. I think those two go together. He loved to sing and dance, Stein said. He had a beautiful voice and was a good dancer. He really felt strongly about the city. He was a true statesman. He really was. I met him along the way when I worked at Delphi in Government Relations and continued to cross paths with him after that, and he had a huge impact on me. I think about him often. I would like his family to know I carry him in my heart into every meeting and everything I do with the city. And I'm hoping, here we are a year later, that we can talk, I know we talked initially about doing something to honor him here and his time. And I think at this one year, I'm hoping that we can revisit that discussion and honor Tony permanently here in some way at City Hall. For right now, if we could all just remember a man who gave a lot to the community and we all enjoy the benefits of it every day that we live and work here.
Thank you. Well said. Any further council comments? Any comments on reports in the packet this evening? I see that no one has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy, non-residents of Troy and not from Troy businesses. There is no closed session this evening, so we are adjourned. Thank you for coming this evening.